On the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23 regular meeting and the January 23 executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Our first action is an appeal of an administrative decision. The Board will consider action on an appeal of the issuance of a building permit for the construction of a single-family residence and other structures on property addressed as 27 West Onwensia. The appeal was heard at the January 23, 2012, meeting. I would entertain a motion that would affirm the issuance of a building permit for the construction of a single-family residence and other structures on property addressed as 27 West Onwensia Road, and approval of the issuance of the final administrative decision as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Do we hear a motion?
Second.
And maybe have a roll call vote on that, please. All those, Mr. Culberson?
Board Member Culberson?
Aye.
Board Member Kristoff?
Aye.
Board Member Siccherelli?
Aye.
Board Member Dixon?
Aye.
Board Member Frinson?
Aye.
Board Member Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman here.
Aye. Now, we have before us several new petitions. Before that, though, I would like to ask if there are any declarations of conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts on either of the two.
Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We have a motion interrupted. We have a motion, we have a ruling on the motions for the record, please.
We did receive your motion, and we considered it, and we are not taking oral argument this evening.
But is there going to be a denial or affirmative?
It is, the discussion is included in the written order, which I can actually, the discussion will be included in the written order, which I will actually have available shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to ask the Board members if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts on 395 Owani Road.
No.
So the petition before us is consideration of a request for approval of a variance from the lot-in-depth zoning requirements to allow construction of an addition to a residence at 395 Owani Road. Right. All parties who are involved in 395 Owani, I would like to swear you in prior to your testifying.
Attorney for Michael Bresman, Architect for the Winds.
I'm Mike.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
Yes. Chairperson and Board members, thank you for allowing me to present for my clients, Mike and Jackie Wynn, 395 North Owani Road. Just briefly, I'd like to go over the property history. The original property was a four-lot subdivision that was founded in 1929. The current property was quick claim deeded away in 1949. The city approved a building permit for the original home in the early '50s. The original house was designed by Jerome Cerny, he was an architect of note. It was a colonial-inspired home with typical Cerny detailing. The city approved a significant addition and detached garage in 2004. And then my clients, Mike and Jackie Wynn, purchased the home in the fall of 2011. The addition, the goal of the addition is simply to connect the existing detached garage, which was a 2004 addition, to the 2004 addition to the home. Appropriate location, it's adjacent to the garage, it's the service wing of the home, and then the setback of the garage facade to the addition is two foot nine inches. It's the appropriate massing, the freeze board on the garage sets the height of the addition. The flat roof minimizes the massing and provides a cleaner connection between the garage and also the house. And then, the overall addition is subservient to both the house and the garage. There's some really nice elements that were designed into the garage, and also a side porch, and we do not want to compete with them. The addition as well uses appropriate materials and detailing, the wood freeze board and detailing matches the existing. We used a painted brick to blend in, not to call attention to itself. The windows to match the size and proportions of the existing on the addition. The doors reclaimed from the garage, and the bluestone stoops are to match what's out there. Some zoning facts, the property is zoned R4 lot-in-depth. The property is just under 36,000 square feet, the minimum lot size for R4 is 60,000 square feet. A lot-in-depth side yard setback is 50 feet. The original home, which was designed by Cerny, and I'll point out later, is non-conforming about, by about 25 feet. The accessory side yard setback for R4 is 20 feet. The 2004 detached garage is non-conforming by just a little over 10 feet. Our zoning request? How do I move this up? We're asking for a variance of, I believe, technically of 39, just under 40 feet, when we attach the addition to the garage, the existing garage then becomes the closest point of the overall structure. Some mitigating factors. The side yard, just a simple comparison of the side yard setbacks, one lot-in-depth requirement, again, is 50 feet, variance is just under 40 feet. R4 without a lot-in-depth requirement would be 20 feet, so the variance really would, if you look at it, would be just under 10 feet. And then comparable lot sizes in R2 district, which, you know, this is a three-quarter acre lot within R4, is about 12 feet, or is 12 feet, and the variance would then just be under two feet. We did, working with staff, working with Megan and the city, we did go through looking at alternative locations for the addition, and we explored those with the direction of staff. And we came, with the process, we came to the understanding that this is, what we're proposing is the least amount of impact to the neighbors. And it also achieves the goals of the homeowner, which is essentially to attach the garage and have a clear connection to the existing house, and as well as having a bath or a pool bath for the existing pool in the backyard. And then, the last point is, the previous and current owners did not create the hardship. Some mitigating factors continue, but the property and neighbors, the property and the neighbors' properties are heavily wooded, as you'll see from some of the photos that I'll present. It's screened well even in winter, which you'll see from the photos. There's a continuous six-foot-tall stockade fence to the northern properties that back up to the Winds property. There is no visual impact to the western neighbor. The existing garage is there now, it's not moving. It blocks the addition in every way from a massing perspective. And the property is really unique in its zoning history, and it's our belief that it will not create any kind of zoning precedent for the rest of the city of Lake Forest. As you can see, north is, north is up, we just have it horizontal so that it fits on the screen. You can see, this was the existing Cerny 1952 home and sun porch. You can see that it's non-conforming. This is the addition, 2004 addition, and then also the 2004 detached three-car garage. This is the proposed flat roof addition to connect the two elements. You can see the overlay, I believe it was 1979, the lot-in-depth 50-foot requirement was added to the property, and then there's the 20-foot accessory side yard setback. Real quickly, here's the three-car existing detached garage, this is the 2004 addition. We've kind of highlighted, here's the addition that we're proposing. You can see it has a front entrance and a rear entrance, also has a mudroom, and then the connection between the two structures. We've kind of highlighted the 50-yard lot-in-depth setback, and then also the 20-yard, or 20-foot accessory structure setback, and you can see the portion of the existing garage that's non-conforming. Front elevation that you see from the private road, the existing three-car garage, which is done very nicely and has a kind of a portico in front. We're kind of creating a section through the additions, not to, so we can be able to see the addition itself. Again, it's, the freeze board just kind of lines up, simple brick addition, again, to be subservient to the two structures. And then the hot, the dark line is the 50-foot setback. And then the front elevation, the majority, a little bit more than the majority of the front elevation is conforming. The rear elevation, you can see, again, this is the 50-foot setback lot-in-depth, this is the 20-foot side yard accessory structure. Because the addition, the existing addition and the garage are on an angle to the property line, the vast majority of the rear elevation is, would be non-conforming. Again, a simple section showing the, how everything ties together cleanly. We're not trying to compete with adding a gabled roof and continuing onto the house. Again, we're trying to know our place here and fade away. This is a before shot, this was taken in late summer, fall. This is actually taken from right on the entrance from the private road. You can see, again, the garage here, you can see the nice side porch that the architect Susan Rolander did to kind of pick up some of the detailing on the Cerny house. So that's, that's what it is now. And then we kind of just photoshopped what the attachment or the addition would be. Again, we're trying to just fade away. Before and after. And then finally, this is just overall site. You can see the four or five houses that front Deer Path, they back up to the private road, and you can see there's a continuous stockade fence there, you can hardly see that, even in the dead of winter, you can hardly see the existing structures that are there now. Down here is the property, I think it's the original house to the four-lot subdivision that's over here. And, again, its views of the addition would be blocked by the existing garage that, which was approved in 2004. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to hear identification of the issues by staff.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a little background on lots-in-depth. The, a lot-in-depth is characterized by a lot with limited or no street frontage, typically surrounded by other lots. And, in this case, the lot is accessed by a private drive and requires a 50-foot setback from all property lines based on the zoning district, the R4 district. In 1952, the city did issue a building permit for the house, as well as for the addition and detached garage. Since the house was built, the city adopted the lot-in-depth provision, which required a more restrictive setback for the structure, and, for this property, and the structure became non-conforming with respect to that setback. The proposal to, is unique, and it's to attach the house to the garage, which triggers a more restrictive setback, not only for the addition, but also for the garage. So the actual variance request is to allow the garage to remain approximately 10 feet from the property line, while the actual construction will be sited over 35 feet, I believe it's around 37 feet from the property line. The petitioner did a pretty thorough job describing the architecture and the impact to the neighbors. Staff is supportive of this project, and there's a positive recommendation in your staff report with findings to support that recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. One more thing. There was an error in the staff report with respect to the Historic Preservation Commission review. The staff report noted that it was March 22nd, it was actually February 22nd. So the, given the fact that this property is within the historic district, the commission reviewed the design of the addition, as well as a building scale variance for this project, and recommended, or approved the project at that time.
Thank you, Megan. Now, do we have any questions or requests for clarification from the Board to either the petitioner or staff?
I have one question. What was the rationale to stay with a flat roof versus carrying, carrying the garage roof, you know, over the same? Was it to try to keep it minimal and at least?
That was one thing, but you can see here, there's a, there's a nice little portico or porch on the garage, and then there's a side porch here. If we had added a roof one, we would have an issue with the windows.
Oh, okay.
Because my dealings with Lake Forest over the last 15, 20 years on the architectural side, is that they do like to see a starting and stopping point, and can, and not have it kind of bleed into one element.
So it's really architecturally better doing at this point, yeah.
Just a quick reminder to the Board members to make sure your microphones are turned on when you're speaking.
Megan, the addition of, the house addition and the garage were constructed in 2004. Was there, was there a variance required or requested then?
There's no record of a variance requested at that time, no.
Was one necessary?
No, based on the, the permit was issued for this construction as it sits on the property today.
And if there had been a connection between the house and the garage in 2004, would a variance have been required then?
Similar to this request?
Yes.
The connection would require a variance. But at that time, no connection was proposed, to my knowledge.
If it, if it had been proposed, would we have been able to build the addition, the garage and?
I believe in 2004 that there was an error in the interpretation, and I think that the garage, as it was constructed, should have required a variance, and that review was not done.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? We can now open it up to any public testimony? Is there anyone who would care to speak or comment? Not seeing any comments. Would any member of the Board like to cross-examine the architect or staff?
No.
Okay, are there any final questions from the Board? Or comments the Board would like to make on this petition?
Questions, comments? I just don't have a lot of heartburn on this one. Here's the B of appropriate addition that doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood or cause a hardship with any of the neighbors, so I'm inclined to support.
Yeah, I would agree, if anything, it probably enhances the appearance of the structure, because usually when the garage is attached, it's more architecturally, you know, nice than if it's detached, so I don't see anything negative here.
And up to this point in time, staff, there have still been no public comments made or letters received? Any issues from the neighbors?
No, there was no public that spoke on this item at the commission meeting, and we've received no written testimony.
Thank you.
So?
Then, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Chairman, I would recommend approval to the City Council of the requested variance at 395 North Owani Road to allow for the new addition to be located no closer than 37 feet to the west of the property line, and the existing garage to remain setback 10 feet from the west property line, as shows the site plan provided in the Board's packets.
Do we, I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed. Thank you. And our next petition is for consideration of a request for an amendment to a special-use permit for Lake Forest College to allow replacement of an existing 60-bed student residence hall with a new 235-bed residence hall on South Campus. The owner is Lake Forest College, representative is James Curtin, Solomon Caldwell-Buns.
Chairman here, I might suggest that before you hear the presentation, maybe we can unveil the model, and you can take a few minutes to get up and walk around and view it. I would also ask, I know you all received the staff report electronically, I do have hard copies if, if you need them and would like them in front of you, so maybe, maybe you could take a five-minute recess and look at the model and then start up again?
Do we need a motion to recess?
You can just declare that you're in recess for five minutes, and they can turn off the camera.
We're in recess for five minutes, thank you. The recess has now ended, and we are back in session. And prior to proceeding, I would ask if there are any declarations of conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts on the part of the Board?
Chairman here, I'd like to note that my uncle Wesley M. Dixon Jr. is life trustee of Lake Forest College.
I would like to, at this time, swear in any parties that will be intending to testify at tonight's meeting.
I'm Steve Scott, the president of Lake Forest College.
Very honored to have you here tonight, sir.
Jane Curtin from the Architecture Firm, Solomon Caldwell-Buns.
Joey Dill from the Architecture Firm, Solomon Caldwell-Buns.
Cliff Oram, Lasky Architect, from Lake Forest County.
Bill Reeves, Senior Transportation Engineer, Galton Hamilton Associates.
Dave Gawat, Civil Engineer, from Lake Forest County.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? And President Scott, are you presenting this evening?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to just begin my line with a couple of minutes of comments and a motion of the architect and team to have that, that's his.
Thank you.
Would you like me to use my, or is it?
The mic is better, either at the podium, I think the podium works better for the camera for recording the meeting. Thank you.
This is fine, my pleasure, and, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and to talk about a project that is certainly very important to the college. Just a little bit of background quickly, members of the Board. This has been a very exciting and promising time for the college. Our applications have grown fairly dramatically in recent years. And in connection with that growth in applications, we are in a period of very careful gradual growth. To be specific about that, we anticipate growing by about 175 residential students over the next four to five years, by about 2015-16. Now, that is something that our applicant pool very easily will support, but one of the things that we have to do to make that possible is provide more residential housing for those additional students we expect to enroll. And to do that, we are here tonight to talk about a project that I think we have very carefully designed to meet that anticipated need. I should also say that this would be the first residence hall project the college will have built in more than 45 years. So it's been some real time, beyond renovating existing structures on campus, it's been some real time since we have built any wholly new residence hall. And this is, I think, designed not only to provide the space we need for additional students, but also to refresh our housing stock generally. We located, as you've seen on the model, our South Campus as by far the best area for residential construction for us, and that's for several reasons. One of them is, South Campus is our largest, and if I may, most vibrant residential community already for students at the college. It houses already the largest number of our students, and it is where we have, as you can see on the model, where we have recently completed the new Sports and Recreation Center that is, has been so important to the college, and that I know a number of members of the community take advantage of as well. We also have several administrative offices on South Campus that respond directly to student needs. Our Health Center is there, our Career Center is on South Campus, and several other examples of that sort. So, in that sense, it's entirely and exactly the right place for us to expand our housing. In addition to that, as I think the Board is now aware from, the very helpful work that staff has done, and I should take just a moment to compliment everyone on the staff who has worked for the city's prespa- who has worked from the city's perspective on this project with us because they've indeed been very helpful in moving through quickly some different issues. As you've probably seen from that, we have the existing Moore Hall on the site, which is more than a hundred years old, really must come down. I won't belabor the reasons for that, they're in the staff report, and others may talk more about that tonight. But the need to take down Moore Hall creates an opportunity for us to build a new residence hall on its footprint and take advantage of that siding on South Campus and for the other advantages that I've already described. The new building will be about the same height as Moore Hall, so it is an expanding height in that direction. We do know that we need special permission to build a building that height, but this is not going to be, in any appreciable sense, higher than Moore Hall has been for more than a hundred years there. And it's set back from Sheridan Road in the same way that Moore Hall has been for the past century. So it has sort of the same perspective from Sheridan Road, if you will, that Moore Hall has had for a number of years. Here tonight, with me to answer specific questions that the board may have and to provide more of a presentation, is, as you've already seen, Jim Curtin from the Architecture Firm, Solomon Cordwell Benz, who has done a lot of work on our campus over the years and will present the structure and siding of the desired residence hall for the board's consideration. In addition, Dave Gawalt is here to talk, at the board's pleasure, about a parking study that we have done to address the parking requirements that the college has and that might go along with this residence hall. Cliff Miller, landscape architect, is here to talk about landscaping that will be part of the project and how we will, among other things, deal with the impervious service question that we need to address as part of this project. I want to end just by saying the college has really tried to be a good neighbor in this regard. We had a public open house for members from the community two weeks ago and invited, through doorhangers and other contacts, many members of the community to come to that and learn more about the project. And we're happy, again, to answer any further questions the board may have tonight. I think at the end of all of this, and I certainly hope, the board will agree that we are meeting the criteria we need to meet for a special use permit and for a height variance for this structure. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Curtin, our architect, and be happy if there are any questions for me now or later to address them as well.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Steve. My name is Jim Curtin from the architectural firm of Solomon Cordwell and Benz. We've had, I have the pleasure of presenting to you and also working with Lake Forest College and on other projects for the college. My job is to give you a sense and a feel on why this is an appropriate solution for the college and their need for housing. But first, let's look at the existing survey for the site itself. You'll see, this is a map where north is straight up, and here is Sheridan Road. This is the location of the current Moore Hall. And then you have the, what we refer to as the quad buildings adjacent to that. Students, this becomes kind of a central student community with the quad buildings. Nolan Hall was remodeled a number of years ago, but that's the only change that has happened in this area apart from the sports center. In looking at, you'll see here, too, there's a recreation field that is along Sheridan Road that really provides a great recreation feature for the students and is proposed to stay. Let's look at the actual site context itself. This is a photo of Moore Hall. If my clicker works. Moore Hall's in the upper-left corner, and you can see it's actually a four-and-a-half-story structure. It has sixty, approximately sixty beds, and it has been analyzed by the architectural firm of Johnson Lasky Architects. And we're prepared to give the building review board a full appraisal of the property, and there are some very serious concerns in the idea of adaptive reuse for the project or for the building itself. It doesn't fulfill the needs for students today. And then you have, adjacent to that, is Hickson Hall. Hickson is their performing arts venue, and that would be immediately in front of Moore Hall along Sheridan. You can see photos of Nolan Hall, which represents three stories on one side of the building, but the predominant height of the building is four stories, especially along Rosemary. So that gives you somewhat the context of the area. Now, if we look at the site plan, and not go that fast, but if we look at the site plan, you can see it's still the same orientation as the survey, and here is the proposed new building. Why that site and why that location? It's very simple. There is a pedestrian primary path that runs the full length of the college, and it goes from north all the way to south, and this is the path right here. It then terminates at the sports center. The sports center is the primary source of student life on the South Campus, and it's very well-used and it really does support student life. The proposed building, you can see Moore Hall is right here and it occupies that leg. The building does extend further to the north to get our occupancy, which is two-hundred-and-thirty-five beds, but it does fall directly along that line. We also, and Dave Gawalt will talk about this, there's eighteen new parking spaces there located, and we preserve the recreation field in its entirety. So although the building is relatively nestled into the other quadrangle buildings, it actually completes the quad, just as Moore Hall did, it completes the quad and it really supports that residential life and community on this part of the campus. If we look at the elevations, we do draw all these elevations devoid of any vegetation, trees, which there is significant vegetation around this entire property, but it shows the facade. And without getting into too much detail, this is a full masonry facade. It is proposed to incorporate two types of brick, and we've incorporated patterning within the brick, on the accent brick. And it also is designed not only to represent a more traditional front and a traditional presence along Sheridan Road, but also work in conjunction with the existing building sitting that are located on South Campus, and that includes the quad buildings. We've placed a roof on the building, and that's primarily so that we could provide that residential character, but also shield any kind of rooftop mechanical systems from the street and from view. And we've articulated the profile of the parapet to add a residential character through gables that punctuate the facade. Another view, this would be the view along Sheridan Road. It basically equates to the existing Moore Hall. The building does continue on to the right, which is to the north, but here you can see the relative proportion of the building as it sits along Sheridan Road. The overall approach on this, in terms of the renderings, is we do have a very significant setback, and that really allows us, in many ways, to go ahead and say the existing Moore Hall proportion, scale, and mass that exists today is, in essence, replicated and built off of. And so this view would be taken from the corner of Rosemary and Sheridan, looking to the south and to the west. So I'm not quite walking along the student pathway on this, but I am at the intersection of Rosemary and Sheridan. And here you can see the residential proportion of the building and how it sits on the site. You'll also see in these renderings, we opted to show the buildings in their entirety. So in the wintertime, we won't have all the deciduous coverage, but you can see how the trees actually are ghosted in this image. It is relatively nestled behind that vegetation. This would be a view actually taken just to the north or to the west of the student pedestrian walkway, and I wanted to point out a couple of items here. This is a view of Nolan Hall, and so that, you can see, it's expressed four stories in this location, and as it goes down Rosemary, it's consistently four stories at that location. But this would be, the student pathway would be located in this part of the site. And you, in essence, gateway into the internal quad area of the five residence halls that compose this area of South Campus. And I could go in on the detail of the building and the facade, but this is primarily showing you the relative scale and size of the building on the site. The model is also a really great tool that we've used to really demonstrate how the building fits into the site. It's one thing to look at it from above, but I would encourage you to actually look at it at a lower level because then you really do capture these views, which are hard to do, but they actually show up better on the model. Now I'd like to turn it over to Dave Gawalt, and he will talk to you about civil and parking.
Good evening. My name is David Gawalt, and I'm a principal in the firm of Gawalt-Hamilton Associates, who are civil and traffic engineers, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Illinois. The first thing that I'd like to talk about tonight is generally the site grading of the property. The new Moore Hall building will pretty much occupy the high ground, although the westerly portion of the site does generally drain to the east and then generally drains to the southeast. There is some of the site that does drain to the north as well. Because the property has net new impervious surface above what's there today, we will be required to provide a stormwater detention basin, which will be located in the corner of the property near Rosemary and Sheridan Road. This is the lower portion of the property in terms of the overall topography. The stormwater detention will be provided in what's called a rain garden-type detention basin because we cannot provide the normal detention, which you might most commonly know would be an open water pond. This detention pond on the site is approximately a quarter of an acre in size, and that's really too small to build a normal conventional wet-bottom detention basin. The benefits of having a rain garden-type basin is that we will be able to use native plants that are specifically chosen to absorb some of the stormwater that would be running off into this detention basin. There's also a gravel layer below the vegetation, which acts somewhat like a sponge and absorbs some of that stormwater and releases it into a storm sewer in a small restricted pipe to Sheridan Road. The project will require enhancement to the water system on the quad area, and in addition, the project will also require approximately three-hundred feet of new city water main on Rosemary Road. The project will provide eighteen new permanent parking spaces in this location, and that will enhance the overall parking that's generally in the South Campus area. Our firm did a campus-wide parking utilization study on January twenty-six, two thousand and twelve. It was a Thursday, it was a typical school day, inadequate parking was available on the South Campus as well as the middle campus. During that utilization study, the middle campus peak parking usage occurred at twelve p.m., and there were thirty-two spaces on middle campus available during that peak hour. On South Campus, the peak occurred a little bit earlier at eleven a.m., and there were a hundred-and-forty-eight available spaces on South Campus. So there were a hundred-and-forty-eight open spaces on South Campus at that eleven a.m. peak day on Thursday. Now, we also did a weekend parking study on two sports event weekends. One was on January twenty-eighth, which was a Saturday, where there were multiple events, one being a very highly attended basketball game in the afternoon, and that particular sports weekend caused the parking on South Campus to be completely used. Then we went back on another Saturday, February eleventh, which was another sports weekend. It wasn't quite as highly utilized as the weekend before. During that particular Saturday, the college asked the students who normally park in the south parking lot, which is adjacent to the sports center, to relocate their cars to north campus or middle campus. By our study, we found that approximately sixty to eighty students did move their cars, and during that weekend, there was adequate parking. So that by notifying the students ahead of time and asking them to relocate their cars during these peak sports events, the college has instituted a plan in which they can provide more parking for the spectators who would normally come to the sports center facility to either attend basketball or hockey or even football. So there is this proven opportunity where the college can provide more parking on South Campus to try and alleviate the congestion during sports weekends. That pretty much concludes the description of the site grading and the civil engineering. I'll be followed by Cliff Miller, the landscape architect.
Members of the board, Cliff Miller, landscape architect for Lake Forest College. I would like to, let's see if I can find that. Here's the landscape plan that we've developed for Lake Forest College. I would like to point out a little bit of background in regards to the landscape plan. We've developed over the last couple of decades a style and an approach to the landscape at the college, focusing on what we think are some of the most important elements regarding the landscape at the college, and that is that our primary focus has been the development of a setting for the college and the protection of the setting, as you know, for all of you who've traveled up Sheridan Road. The college sits amongst stands of oaks in the ravines and in a sort of a naturalistic presentation. It's open, there's great view lines. These represent some of the best and more open views on the east side of Lake Forest. It really is a wonderful asset. And one of the things that we developed in the course of the master plan and in our landscape approach to the three campuses was to carry that type of focus, working on the setting of the campus as a whole. We're not looking at, you know, foundation plantings like you would on a residential house, we're not looking at flower beds, that sort of stuff. We're looking at providing a continuum up and down Sheridan Road that ties the north, the middle, and the South Campus together. The pedestrian spine is a continuum that connects them all. We would like the buildings to do the same and in keeping with that, the landscape. So, you know, our goal in this area that started when we worked with Nolan has been carried through on the sports center, is to develop the type of look that you currently see in front of middle campus at the intersection of college and Sheridan, which is scattered large oaks, young oaks, we have quite a variety of ages of trees, and that's what you see on this plan here. Obviously, the site, for those of you that have been there, contains quite a few large mature trees, and what we've done is augmented that. You know, we have Waslick Field that we have to obviously not plant in, we have a very narrow section between the field and Sheridan Road. In the past, I worked with Dan Reeves from the City of Lake Forest in trying to develop a way to put trees in that corridor and basically came to the conclusion that that was an extremely difficult thing to do. So because of that, we have added several trees between the field and the proposed Moore Hall. And so what you see here is a continuum of what we've been doing on both Nolan, the sports center, Deer Path, and all of the other areas within the college that have been updated over the last couple of decades, and I think it works real well. So therein lies the landscape, and I think, Jim, you wanted to take this back and...
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. We've now heard from the petitioner, and I'd ask staff to identify the issues.
Thank you, Chairman Care. I'd like to cover four topics. Excuse me. I'd like to review process and the use of special use permits. I'd like to talk a little bit about the history of the college over time. I'd like to talk about key issues, and then finally, I'd like to provide you with the staff recommendation. Process. This is before you with a request for a special use permit. As some of you have heard a number of times, the City of Lake Forest is primarily zoned for residential use. Historically, Lake Forest has never adopted a public land zoning district, an institutional zoning district, for the very purpose of assuring that when institutions grow or change, that there is a public process through which there can be community discussion, and there can be approval with conditions as appropriate. Various institutions that, through the years, have gotten special use permits to operate in residential zoning districts include all of our churches, includes all of our schools, primary schools, private schools, Lake Forest College, Lake Forest Hospital, and private clubs, and city facilities. So special use permits have a long history of use and really have proven to work quite well. Lake Forest College predated any code, the entire zoning code by the city, and predated the city. So Lake Forest College beat us all here. But through the years, Lake Forest has been recognized and authorized, reauthorized, through various special use permits, as various pieces of the college have grown and changed. In 2003, the city adopted a five-year master plan for the college. That master plan identified several specific projects, but also at that time, adopted an overall signage plan, an overall lighting plan, and as part of that master plan, the pedestrian spine that you've heard referenced tonight was put in place. Prior to that, there was really not a consistent way for pedestrians to move through the campus. So having this piece come before you as yet another special use permit allowing the college to grow and change is very consistent with what has occurred with the college, and also very consistent with what has occurred with other institutions. Your role in reviewing the special use permit is really to look at the use, to look at the overall siting, to look at off-site impacts, onsite impacts, to look at issues such as traffic and lighting impacts. The Building Review Board will also have a role in reviewing this. This matter is scheduled to come before the Building Review Board at the first meeting in March. They will really focus more directly on the architectural design of the building, the detailing, the various architectural elements, the siting in relation to other buildings on campus, the exterior materials, and ultimately, the Building Review Board will look at a landscape plan, and it's likely that any lighting that comes along with this building will simply be consistent with the previously approved lighting that's already on campus. Both the zoning board's recommendation on this and the Building Review Board's recommendation will go to the city council together for final approval. So that's the process piece, just to know where, to let you know where the zoning board fits in. I already spoke a little bit about the college's history, and just to reiterate that this is really an institution that's never going to be done. The college is always going to have to grow and change to remain competitive, to keep up with current trends. It's been a number of years ago now, but Deer Path Hall on north campus was significantly changed, although it was not demolished. It did grow in size and was completely reshaved on the outside. More recently, Nollin Hall, very close to where the new Moore Hall is proposed, was expanded in size. The other three buildings that comprise the code will also need to see some upgrading. That upgrade will probably be much smaller in scale and will relate directly to life safety improvements to meet some upcoming requirements of the state. The sports center was recently expanded. As each of these expansions and changes on the campus occur, we do look back to the master plan that was adopted in 2003 and try and really bring some consistency with respect to lighting and landscaping and signage in particular. Looking at the request that's presently before you, I just want to hit on various issues. Number one is the use. South campus is the appropriate location for an expansion of student residence halls. It is really the largest area of student residence, as it's been described. It really is a hub of activity. The pedestrian spine connects it back to the academic building. So from a use perspective, this is an appropriate location. The college has long been recognized as a use in this location and the south campus as a hub of residential activity. The second issue is the overall siting of the building. You did receive in your packet a study of various alternatives. From the staff perspective, I think we'd like a little bit of time to just look at refining, look at studying the exact siting of the building and perhaps looking at some refinement. Perhaps the existing siting is appropriate. It does appear to come quite close to Nollin Hall, and maybe that does serve as a gateway, as was described. I think we just want some time to study that a bit further, to make sure that, in fact, it serves as a gateway and not really as a darkened corridor. This building will be slightly taller than Nollin Hall and the other buildings in that quad area, and we want to make sure that a slight shift or a slightly different angle wouldn't open that up and allow some more lighting. The Building Review Board will also consider the siting. Parking is an issue that, when this was first brought to staff, that was our initial concern. We do hear some increasing concerns from neighbors in the surrounding residential areas about parking for campus activities on the streets, and not so much for the activities, maybe a large football game or an alumni event, which are once, which are rare occurrences. But I think there's more concern about the potential for growing parking on residential streets on a daily basis. At the request of city staff, the college did, as you heard, conduct a parking study, and much like the central business district, it's not a question of are there enough parking spaces on the campus, but it's how do we get people to use the right spaces and park in the right places? We deal with the same thing in the central business district and haven't yet found the solution to that one. But the college, as part of the parking study, does propose a number of policies, including a policy that would really discourage students from parking on streets, whether those are students who live on campus or students who commute to campus. As one of the recommendations, we're suggesting that as an exhibit to the special use permit, we include the parking diagram that they have included in the parking study, and even enhance that parking diagram. I think the piece that is shown there is areas specifically identified for commuter students to park. So with that diagram and with an understanding of maximum number of commuter students in any one term, or maximum number of residential students who would be permitted to have cars on campus, we can be assured that the number of spaces do provide adequate parking area for the students and for visitors. I think that we want to be respectful of those residential neighborhoods and continue to focus on that and work with the college to assure that we don't have a growing problem in that respect. Stormwater management, I think we're looking for some encouragement and support from the Zoning Board of Appeals to handle the stormwater detention requirements in a way that really is creative. I think in the past, the city has very quickly gone to a solution that is a detention pond. In this case, the area where the detention will be handled will be very visible to the public. It will be on Sheridan Road. So the concept of doing a rain garden bio-swell-type treatment provides the opportunity to really landscape this area appropriately, to really do it in a way that's sustainable, perhaps even provide some opportunities for students to be involved, and avoid a situation where we just have a deep detention pond, which could in effect, could in fact, become an attractive nuisance for students in the area. So from a planning perspective, we support being creative and really looking forward and really using some cutting-edge techniques for dealing with stormwater. So we look for the zoning board's input on that concept. Final issue I wanted to address is overall character. We do know that this building will be larger than Moore Hall, and as this goes before the Building Review Board, I think the Building Review Board will be looking at those types of details from the construction aspect. One issue that I think is important to understand is how the lighting of the student rooms itself will be addressed. When the sports center was approved, there was a requirement for internal shades that were on timers, but that was for a much larger space, an area where there was a track, an area that could be more controlled. In this case, we're dealing with individual rooms. It may be that we can look at a type of glass, although certainly getting natural light is important into the building. A better solution might be to really look at the internal fixtures, and although the boards normally wouldn't be involved in a condition that would dictate internal lighting fixtures, in this case, I think there's the really real opportunity to have lighting fixtures that direct the light in a way that minimizes the spillover light that may come out of those windows. So that may be an opportunity to address that issue. Very quickly, the demolition of Moore Hall is something the Building Review Board will address, but I will say that from both our police department and our fire department, this is something that they've been concerned about for quite a while. Moore Hall is really an unusual structure, given its age and given the fact that it houses students. 60 beds for students. It is a structure that in the past has had some problems. There was at least one fire in the structure. Parts of the building have been reconstructed. It is a life safety concern that we would like to see addressed in the near future. In the staff report, we do recommend that, although we feel this is a solid project, there's been a lot done by the college team in a short while, we do feel we need a few more weeks just to finalize everything and really bring back to you a solid list of conditions and recommendations. In the staff report, we do include some recommendations for some additional information. One was the enhancement of the parking diagram, which I mentioned. Another was a request for some additional sections through the property, showing the building height in relation to the elevation of both Rosemary Road and Sheridan Road, so that as you consider the height variance, we can be very specific in the height that you're being asked to approve. We also want to come back to you with the heights of other buildings on campus. I meant to pull that out today, and I didn't have a chance to do that, but Deer Path Hall was granted a height variance. We want to get you the information on the heights of the other buildings in the quad and the sports center. Also request some additional information on lighting. I think we want to update the tree inches. There will be only minimal trees lost with this project, but there are some other tree inches from earlier projects that we just want to get into the record and make sure we continue the reforestation plan, as Mr. Miller talked about. And finally, actually, two more things. Before your next meeting, we will also ask that the building footprint be staked, once the Building Review Board has had a chance to provide input, and then we would also request that a construction vehicle and access plan be provided, although that's something that would normally be provided later in the process. At least if we can get a concept and incorporate that into the special use permit, we'll give some assurance to the neighbors as to where those vehicles will stage and where they'll access the site. Based on that, staff does recommend that you provide direction, request any additional information, but that you continue this item to the next meeting. At that time, we would expect you to take final action. If you are comfortable with various aspects of the project, it would be appropriate for you to continue the public hearing only with respect to certain items. If you choose to do that, you can do it either way. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, we have, I don't know if you can answer this, or we need to address the architects, but we're having 235 additional beds being proposed, and 60 are from, are now in Moore Hall, if I'm correct. So that's a net of 175. 18 spaces for 175 students doesn't seem like enough. Also, are, do we have parking on streets during class time? Parking on city streets?
The streets around the campus are not signed for no parking, and that's always been a little bit difficult issue. Some of the areas are signed, but some of the residents in the area prefer that the streets not be signed, but student parking is not encouraged on streets. We do have some situations where there are some students, we believe, parking on the streets, but street, residential neighborhoods are not intended for student parking. Overall, the number of parking spaces on campus, the 18-space parking lot really augments the existing number of parking spaces. It's not meant to fully satisfy, but there are overall enough parking spaces on campus to address the parking need. But we are also suggesting that, as part of the parking document that's submitted to the board, that there be a maximum number specified of students living on campus who will be permitted to bring cars onto campus. And perhaps someone from the college team can provide further information.
That was my next question. Do all stu, are all students allowed to bring cars to campus? And if so, and second part of that question is, do they have specific parking lots that they must park in, or can they park anywhere on campus? So if you could address those two, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be very happy to. Two or three questions here, and I'll try to answer all of them. No, not all students are authorized to have cars on campus. We largely prohibit freshmen and sophomores from having cars. There are exceptions granted on an individual basis, but largely, freshmen and sophomores do not have cars. The second thing to say is, as I think you'll see when you have time to look at the parking study that's been done more broadly, there is ample parking on campus for the number of students that we have and expect to have, and we expect to direct students to park where there are spaces, probably more actively than we have done in the past, not only on the kinds of big sports weekends that were referred to earlier, but more generally. So that, for example, there is a certain number of spaces on south campus, there's a certain number of spaces on middle, and then on north as well, and we will more actively direct students to those spaces where they can park. The third thing I want to say is, is that we expect, starting in the fall, through a system frankly of penalizing students in a permitting process, we expect to really try to do the best we can to control students from parking on streets in the area. We do have to deal with the fact that a number of the streets that are near campus are not posted against parking. So it is legal, if you will, for anyone to park on those streets. Nevertheless, our practice is going to be to try to prevent students from doing so through our own campus permitting process and a form of penalty that we might impose for students who we catch doing that. So I hope that addresses at least some of your concern.
Thank you.
Do other members of the board have questions for either the petitioner or staff?
Yeah, I sure do. And I might start with a question for staff. Kathy, you had mentioned the staff wanted to take a look at some of the siting, or maybe even some of the alternate locations. Are you saying the staff is considering proposing any of the three alternate locations?
No. No. In, in thinking about siding, I, I think what, what we want to look at is just that proximity between the proposed new student residence and Nolan, immediately to the west. It, it becomes real tight there. So, we weren't at all suggesting that one of those other locations would be better, but we want to look at whether that distance is sufficient, whether that should be opened up a little wider. But no, we were not proposing any of the other three locations that we're studying.
I'd hope not. And actually, I, I have architectural parking and then just general character questions. I suppose for the architect or, or maybe the parking consultant thereafter, can, can you give us an idea, and I understand height is not exactly defined yet, but what difference in height are we talking about? Is it a foot? Is it five feet? And also, if you could give us an idea of the general mass of the old building versus new and, you know, just general square footage.
The, the height of the building is being proposed as approximately two feet higher. The measurement is all the way to the ridge of the, both buildings. So, both buildings have a pitched roof. The other thing to note is, in relation to the other buildings, Nolan Hall, for example, they, when that building was built, it was built, I think that's eight foot, seven inches floor to floor. It's a very, very low floor-to-floor height in that building. So, we are showing an eight foot six ceiling height in the new Residence Hall. As far as its relation, hopefully I can do this quickly. We outlined on the site plan, the profile of Moore Hall. And one more.
Can I just go past?
There we go. You can see that profile goes to here and to here. And the existing Moore Hall is a very narrow structure as well. It's a two-room, a two-person occupancy bedroom stacked.
Triple the size, double the size? I mean...
As far as the area, I think it's two and a half times.
Okay. Fair enough. And I guess Sam really asked my question too. Sam, I've got the same concern. I mean, you've got 175 additional students and 18 spaces. It just, I mean, I know we have a parking study in there, but, you know, how, I suppose is the question. Maybe finally, and this actually seems like more of a planned commission question, but it's, it's under the special use permit purview, so it's fair game. I, I think for the college, it's an exciting project, by the way. But, you know, the concerns of a couple of the special use permit criteria, namely morals, comfort, general welfare, property values and surrounding neighborhood, I live in the neighborhood. Could you opine a little bit about how the addition of, of 175 students in a, in a Residence Hall like this, do you think could have positive or negative impacts on the neighborhood? And what I'm talking about is students that live off-campus and, and perhaps don't tend to a property the way that resident homeowners do. How do you think that the establishment of this new, this new hall will impact the surrounding neighborhood? And I realize that's fairly subjective, but it's, it's fair game here.
No, I appreciate the question, Mr. Frankson. My belief is that this will impact the neighborhood positively in the very sense that you're concerned about here. Because once this building is done, in terms of our total growth expectations in the foreseeable future, we will be able to house on-campus the full number of residential students that we expect to have. Put differently, there would be little incentive for students to seek housing away from campus. Now, I'm not talking about true commuting students, of whom we have some number, who live in neighboring or nearby North Shore communities and commute back and forth. I'm also obviously not talking about students who are in Chicago, where we also have a residential program, or on study abroad programs, of which we have several. But when we complete this facility, we'll have space on-campus for 175 more students than we have today. And that will dramatically, if not completely, reduce an incentive for students to, to look off-campus, which I think some presently do because we are, we are crowded right now.
I, I think that's an important element for the board to consider. Can you, as long as we're on the topic, could you comment on what the, the college's mandate or criteria is for students to either live on or off-campus? Can, I mean, do freshmen and sophomores, must they live on campus?
With the exception again of genuine commuting students. Let's say a, a Stevenson High School student who is living with his parents in, in Barrington or, or, with the exception of that student who might be coming to campus non-residentially, all first-year freshman students are required to live on campus, and by and large, all sophomores are as well. Now, when you get into sort of the latter part of sophomore year and then into the junior and senior year, of course, that's when certain students do start going off-campus, not to live in the neighborhood, but I mean to go to Chicago where we have other programs or on study abroad programs. But am I answering your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just out of curiosity, what's the general timing for commencement and completion of the project?
Yeah, the timeline.
Right. We, if we are fortunate in receiving the approvals that we need from the city, we expect to demolish Moore Hall shortly after commencement, which is in the middle of May. And then we would begin construction this coming summer and complete the project before the end of the following summer, so that it's ready for students by the fall of 2013.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Pleasure. Thanks.
Do any other board members have questions for the petitioner or staff?
Just one. On the parking proposed area, have you looked at, is that the best place for, as far as, looks like you'd be able to see it from Sheridan Road, but I suppose you're going to do a lot of landscaping around it, so it kind of hides it anyway. But have you looked if there's more way to bury it or something?
I, I may have missed a, a, Mr. Kennedy, was it, was your question about the siding of the project in some way?
No, 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 just where the parking, the new parking is located?
Oh.
Was there any thought or better places for it to go that are more kind of buried behind everything?
Right. The, the small lot that is there where the 18 spaces are designated, actually, that lot is already a temporary lot that was created at the time we were doing the construction of the Sports Center. And part of the request that we're making to the board here is that we receive approval to make that a permanent lot. So, it already exists, if you will. If we don't get that approval, then we would need to look elsewhere. I might also take this opportunity though to say that there are three or four other pocket areas on campus, on Middle and North in particular, where we anticipate over the next several years developing, let's say, 15 to 20 spaces in a pocket in three or four different areas. So, there will be additional parking created on campus as well, in small lots somewhat like that one you see there, as the need arises.
And is there a plan to landscape around the parking lots and stuff?
Yes.
So, they're kind of, you know, parking lots are kind of ugly.
Certainly. I mean, we'll, we'll, part of the general landscaping plan for the entire project will include that too.
One other thing too, you brought up on this retention pond, you could possibly, the engineers would have to do it, but look into underground retention. We do that a lot in residential homes, you know, where it's all pulled underground and then slowly leaked out, you know, into the, to the storm system or whatever we have there.
And that, that is an option, Mr. Kennedy, that we, we considered in this project. I think the, the rain garden that has been proposed, we believe is preferable. We believe first of all that it will adequately provide the detention that we need for South Campus as part of this project. But in addition, it really will serve, I think, a very important educational function for our students in our environmental studies program and otherwise, because it really is a state-of-the-art way of retaining or dealing with runoff water that is not only environmentally sensitive, but also actually aesthetically very pleasing. And that's because of its proximity to Sheridan Road. That's going to be a very important factor in this as well.
And I would just add that the city does discourage underground storage of water. It really is a water quality issue. I think we've granted one exception, but, but normally that isn't a, we'd rather see the water appropriately treated.
Any other questions?
I have a few questions then. I think particularly for Mr. Curtin. What is the actual size of that gateway now between Nolan Hall and the proposed new Residence Hall?
The dimension between the two buildings?
The width. The width. The gate, so to speak.
In the existing or in the proposed?
Proposed.
Twenty-seven feet.
And I'm trying to look at it from the college's perspective here too, where you do have a screening element on the east side of the proposed residence. Are you moving the Residence Hall to the west to keep more light on the field? I mean, what were some of the other considerations you had?
All the considerations dealt with all three neighboring properties. So, you have Hickson, you have Roberts, I believe, is one to the south, and then Nolan to the west. We also have the north, we'd like to retain as much of a setback off the north as possible. And so, in looking at that balance, and I think that may be what Kathy was referring to in looking at the, at how the building is actually specifically sited, if there's a way we can expand certain dimensions, say for example, that one. But right now, it's a balancing act between all three. And that's where we settled at 27 feet.
I would, once again, just ask staff to review. It does seem fairly tight on the plan. And I would say, as a parent of a prospective student, I would be a little concerned for safety for the students as well. It seems a bit narrow and we're weighing the interests of the nearby residents for light versus the safety of student population.
What's particularly nice about that is that the end of Nolan has a certain angle, and so you have a point, distance between the corner of the building to the building is 27 feet. It opens up as you go further south slightly. So, also the entrances to the building work off of each other. So, the entrance to the new Residence Hall is actually balanced with the entry to Nolan Hall, for example. So, once you go through this gateway, you enter into this quadrangle zone where the entrances are facing each other, and it becomes more or less kind of an entire quad community where you get a lot of visibility internally, but once you gateway into the quad.
Thank you.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff, does the, the purview of ZDA in this case is, is a result of the fact that college is a non-residential use in a residential neighborhood?
Correct.
And so, are we, every time that hap-, every time we undertake a change or a development or improvement, a special use is required?
Yes. But sometimes they, they've done it in a broader way. In 2003, we did work with them to do a, a five-year master plan. When that happens, a series of improvements are approved at one time. But other than that, if something's outside of the approved master plan or the master plan is, were beyond the, the term of that, then yes, projects of this magnitude would come before the zoning board of appeals. If there's something very minor, that would be a different story.
Is it primarily exceeding the 40-foot height for R4 that's figuring this or?
No, it's, it's really the expansion. The, the increase in, in enrollment is a special use permit issue, the increase in the size of this building, the addition of the stormwater area. So, it's various components. The height is one piece of that.
So, a project of this nature will draw in other aspects such as, you mentioned, water management, parking, premium views, landscaping. The scope seems to widen beyond the actual construction of the project. I'm just trying to understand where that scope goes, how far it extends.
Are you looking for the limits of, of the board's purview or?
Well, I'm kind of trying to understand how we get to tree inches from the demolition of Moore.
The special use permit is really an opportunity for the city to assure that, that the college takes appropriate action to continue to be a good neighbor. And the tree issues resulted from, from an earlier project, some of the tree inches that are still owed. So, this is an opportunity for us to really document those inches owed and, and perhaps look at the site plan along with the landscaper for the college and see if there are appropriate locations where maybe trees should be added. If not, there may be other locations at the perimeter of campus that need to be spruced up. We often, you know, as with any institution, we, we do hear from neighbors who have conflicts with, with the college from time to time. And I, I think when projects come forward, if there's an opportu-, opportunity to use some piece of that project to address what may have been an issue on another part of the campus, we want to be able to do that. And I think we've been able to work very successfully with the, the college. For instance, the football field. We were able to really create a, an improvement, a significant improvement to the parkway along the football field that really addressed many of the issues of neighbors in that area.
I mean, Kathy, if, if the existing structure was ripped down and an identical structure was built, we'd still need a special use permit.
That would be a, that's a significant change to, to rip down a Residence Hall. So, if you're looking for...
Well, you can answer my question. I am curious, is, is, is maybe out of bounds, but after all these years, why is it still zoned residential? Has there been any consideration, rezone?
The city of Lake Forest has made a conscious decision years and years and years ago to be a community that's primarily zoned residential. And the tool that's used is a special use permit. So, the various institutions, whether it's city buildings, whether it's the hospital, whether it's the college, those properties are zoned residential, they're embedded in residential neighborhoods. And through this process, the opportunity for the discussion that you're having is afforded and projects are approved with conditions that, that help to control the use, but also for the benefit of the institutions formally recognize that use is appropriate for that particular location. So, when, if we do get a call, you know, on occasion we'll get a call from someone complaining that there's a football game being played in the football field, and we'll acknowledge that it is a football field and it's been approved for that use and there are things that go along with, with that use. So, it's, it's really protection from two sides.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the petitioner, what, do you know how to move on the current, how to the roof line?
It's 52 feet eight.
So, you're not asking for another couple of feet?
Two feet.
Two feet.
Yeah.
And why the, what's the logic and the shape of, of the design there from, from a lot? Does it follow the pedestrian path or?
There's a variety of influences. One is, Moore Hall is already, is part of that quad, so in terms of an influence that exists today, that, and was, that particular hall was done before the quads were built. So, in essence, that is a piece of that quad, quadrangle puzzle. And then in moving northward, we like the, the association of Hickson, which is following in that due... which is following in that due north-south orientation. And the building actually has a slightly shifted complement to that orientation, but setback further from Sheridan Road. So as you're driving, the two... In theory, the two would start to work in concert with each other from a massing diagram. Yet the southern end of the building relates back to the quadrangle. Also too, in the building, just having that simple fold in the building really makes this far more community-based. You don't have long corridors. It becomes more of a nestled intersection at that point. And it really helps to punctuate the entry to the building, which is off the quadrangle side.
Good enough. The... There are some alternate sites proposed on one of the drawings there. But you maintain same shape, is that just for convenience?
The requirement for 235 beds is a requirement. So the idea of having that building as a cohesive unit was an ideal arrangement for that building. And so when we worked it out for... We had the exact program for this building worked out. Then we could locate that footprint in other locations.
Is that part of a longer-term plan to duplicate this footprint elsewhere?
Not at all. It was meant to investigate other locations. And there were pros and cons as part of this middle for each of those alternate locations. Not to say that something couldn't be done as we had thought, well, what if it aligned the southern road and was adjacent to the sports center? While we have some issues, there's some heavy landscaping there that exists already. We like the idea of having a greater setback off Sheridan Road to begin with. And the building starts to disassociate with the quadrangle complex. Where it's located now, all of the students start to work together as a community.
Is this... I'm a little confused. Is this a stormwater irrigation area in place? So this would be... What is there now? I might have missed that.
Um, if...
Oh, I see. You have a Saturday. Go ahead.
I believe there was a house there at one time. And that it has been since removed. And so that's... Right now, it's a landscaped area.
So the plan is to use this as a stormwater irrigation area and accommodate any water management issues in the construction presented?
Correct.
Is... And so is this a gateway office? Or is this considered an adequate plan to accommodate those needs?
Yes, it has more than enough storage for any of the new purview surfaces that are being added. And it's topographically a more location lower than the surrounding area.
Thank you. Just one more question. I think we're all a little hung up on this ATU space proposed parking area. Is that going to be for straight A students? I mean, that's where I want to park. I know that there are... Again, I guess it speaks to the larger question of parking management. ATU spaces kind of off on their own here. Was this...
I probably am going to be repetitive here, Mr. Culbertson, but it is... It is an area that we are taking advantage of because frankly, it was designated for temporary parking as part of the sports center construction project. So it exists in that sense there. Right. And what we would be getting approval for is to make it permanent in that location as one of, as I mentioned earlier, one of what may be two or three other small pocket lots in different locations on campus. But the control of parking that will make this work is active management by the College of Student Parking and direction of student parking to where spaces are available. Because campus-wide, as the study will show, there are actually plenty of spaces.
President Scoot, could you... I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Could you just define more specifically what you mean by active management?
Yeah, well, here's an example. And it's a current example from this past weekend. But we had two conference tournaments on South Campus this past weekend. We had a men's basketball tournament and simultaneously, a women's hockey tournament with visitors coming for both from far in the field. What we did to manage that... We tried this a couple of times in the fall and thought it would work. And now we've proved that it works actually quite well is on Friday, we directed students who typically park on South Campus to move their cars to Middle. They did so on Friday, thereby vacating about 100 spaces on South Campus, which were then available for visitors coming. And I was on campus all weekend on South Campus while these tournaments were underway. And I never saw fewer than six open spaces on South Campus in the main lot right there. My point is, that's an example of how it can be managed. More directly, if we find that once this residence hall is constructed, that there is more of a need for student parking than frankly, we anticipate now on South, what we'll need to do is direct a certain number of students, which will categorize in some way, to park on Middle or park on North. I don't mean just on weekends, but I mean generally speaking. That's the way that we will manage sort of permanent parking, if you will, to suit the spaces that we have where they are. Does that answer your question, Mrs.?
I think it helps. It's an area that we'd like staff to investigate more between now and the next meeting.
Sure.
But sorry, Mr. Christoff, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask, what's the total parking spaces for all the campus, for the entire campus, if you know?
Nine hundred and thirty-four spaces.
Well, I'll catch you up there. I just got to mention this could be a... It'll be RV back. I actually sat on the floor when we undertook the sports center project. And I really appreciated the sensitivity you folks expressed with your work, accepted with respect to the neighbors' concerns about lighting. And I certainly hope that same amount of sensitivity could be able to make sure that we have respect of landscape lighting, security lighting, interior lighting, as neighbors want in the surroundings.
Thanks very much, Mr. Culbertson, for that. But we certainly do intend to exercise the same kind of sensitivity because we understand that lighting is an issue, and we need to handle that adequately. And with help from staff, we'll come up with the right answers.
Thanks, Kathy.
I have a question for either Mr. Curtin or President Scoot. Nolan, Gregory, these other residence halls, how many beds are in each of these? I'm trying to get an idea of the scale of those versus this new building.
Roberts, Gregory, and the clerk. Each houses about 120 students. Nolan houses approximately 150.
And was any thought given to perhaps doing two smaller buildings as opposed to one large building?
The approach on that was...
Use the microphone.
There are services and amenities within the building itself that support all the students. Having it in one building really supports a higher degree of community building among the students within the residence hall itself. So for example, laundry and lounges and entry and multipurpose room that's facing the quad. It saves on repetition, which means you're allowing more students to meet and socialize with each other instead of breaking them into different competing components.
All right, thank you. Any members of the board have any other questions for a petitioner or staff? I'd like to ask some questions of Mr. Frankson, if I could. As a neighbor, what are some of the complaints that you hear from your neighbors about the college?
Well, let me put this generally. College is a wonderful institution. There are many good amenities that the college provides, namely those fall football games. I'm a big Forester fan. If you've never gone to a Lake Forest football game down at the field, you're really missing out on something special in our community. And I'm not talking about... When we're talking about parking concerns, I don't know that we're necessarily talking about big game days when there's a few cars on the street. That's, you know, that just comes with life. I think in general, when we talk about character as it's kind of referenced in the special use permit criteria, it's students that either maybe live off-campus or visit residences and locations off-campus and behave like college students do, that might not be in congruency with homeowners that own their homes and pay their taxes and raise their children and so on. So why don't I leave it at that for now? And I think the college understands where I'm coming from on that issue. And this seems, on the face of it, like it could be an opportunity to clean up some of those issues. But I think our job here for this board is to not worry about, you know, tree widths and obviously, building materials. But how, if this project is approved, what kind of impact will it have on the surrounding neighborhood? Will it be positive, like is being proposed? Or will it have a negative effect? And I think our job here is to make sure that if we... If we allow the special use permit, that the agreement has some real teeth in it to make that happen. Does that make sense?
Then following up on that, Mr. Frankson, what would be your request to staff other areas to investigate between now and the next meeting?
Well, on the face of it, I think we're all a little concerned about the parking. Yeah, I'm not sure. I've got to think about that a little bit. I'm hoping that we're heading towards a continuance that is more general in nature versus specific tonight because there's a whole... I mean, there's several issues to consider. We don't want to drag this on, but...
Correct.
I would suggest that... And we're probably going to have some questions from the audience, too. But I would suggest that if the college could come back in, I think it's April at this point, and really give us a good roadmap as to how this is going to satisfy student life, parking, and any other issue that comes up. I think that's really the crux of what we're kind of looking for up here tonight, so. It's an exciting project, you know.
But in the spirit of the request, it's very close.
Close?
Close to the approval process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I don't think that there's any significant concerns or issues that we see at this point other than the fact finding that needs to occur as part of the process that we're going through.
It'll be interesting to see the college address our concerns at the next meeting.
Are there any other questions for board members? Well, at this time, I'd like to open up for public testimony. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak, who would like to swear you in if you haven't been sworn in before, but please. We're so happy to have an audience. No comments from neighbors or concerns or support for the project either? Okay, at this time, seeing no public testimony, I would ask if the board has any final comments they'd like to make regarding the proposal?
Just reiterating what I think I already said. I mean, the parking's right at the top of the issue. But if all of the criteria of the special use permit are important, but in addition to the parking and the traffic, I think numbers one and number two and probably number three are probably the things that the college should take a look at and be prepared to delve into headfirst at the next meeting.
And you're referring to the staff recommendations?
No, I'm looking at the criteria for the special use permit. There's seven of them. Yep.
President?
Item one. Being the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. And then was it number two and three as well?
Yeah, I think those three are...
Number two. The special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. And item three, the establishment of the special use permit will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Okay.
That was in four, five, six, and seven.
There are...
Is there petitioner rebuttal?
I don't think we can satisfy these questions. No, no rebuttal.
Is... Would staff like to respond to the testimony given?
I would just say that I think we have heard you. I think that the issues that you've identified are issues that I feel confident that we can further define and refine in working with the college team. I would just ask, is there general support on the board for the approach that's been described for stormwater management as opposed to a detention pond? That will help us kind of move in one direction?
I think it sounds very interesting, but I'd like to see a little bit more of maybe some kind of a drawing or something to show what this might look like. It sounds very intriguing.
Okay. We will come back to you with those details and...
If there's any issue with the water, you know, sitting in there and getting all goopy.
All right, then, do we have a motion to continue?
Madam Chairman, I would move to continue consideration of the Lake Forest College petition to the next meeting, April...
April 3rd.
April 3rd, I believe. Or date uncertain. Date certain?
We do need to confirm a date before you leave tonight. Your next regularly scheduled meeting is during spring break week for the schools in Lake Forest. So we've had several requests to not hold it that week. We don't want to push it too far, so we are looking at...
Tuesday, April 3rd.
Tuesday, April 3rd. And I have not yet checked that date with the college. So we will confirm that in the next 24, 48 hours.
So to a date to be determined. April 3rd, to a date to be determined. To allow further study, refinement, and review prior to the board action at the next meeting. And that will be a... We're leaving that open generally at this point.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And should we do a roll call on this, or? No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. This evening's meeting is now concluded.